Good morning, 9 o'clock. I call this regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court to order here in the Titus County Courthouse. And our invocation today will be run to us by Brother Sean Finley from Neville Chapel Baptist Church.
Father, we thank you today. We just ask that you can be with us and take care of the business of this county. Father, we just ask you pray over all our officials. Father, we just pray for protection for those that are out there on purpose, lawmakers, police officers. Father, we just ask you pray that you can just continue to guide and direct us, help us to keep you at the forefront of all things. Father, as the business today is concluded, we leave your Father just one more. And we just ask, Father, if you could just keep your protection over Titus County, over reach of us and the homes of our churches, ready to serve you, to minister you, to the people you're... Father, we just ask that you would just use us in a way to help our reach of us with all this as Jesus said.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the code which stands one nation under God and your difficult political and justice for our own.
Agenda item number one, it's public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. I've got a couple here that want to speak. Ms. Clark?
My name's Michelle Clark. I'd like to request clarification on statements made by Commissioner Parchman in the meeting June... I believe that was June 28. And forgive me if I don't get this exactly right because the recording was a little hard to understand at times. You felt like Chief McCray was anti-volunteer. Reason Winfield was on chopping block in Sugar Hill. You made the comment that the Commissioners hadn't stepped in, others would have followed suit. Can you explain to me that comment? Exactly what do Commissioners do to step in?
Was Sugar Hill not... Were y'all not trying to shut Sugar Hill down?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell me why?
I'm asking you to clarify those statements you made. What did you do to step in?
We opened it back up. Y'all give all the equipment away to all the other fire departments. We stepped in and opened it back up.
Sugar Hill Volunteer Fire Department is a 501(c)(3). They decide if they close. Commissioners have no authority on whether or not a 501(c)(3) closes.
Shouldn't y'all have come to us and let us know before y'all did that?
We had no legal obligation to let you know. And I assure you that nothing you said, any of the Commissioners said or did, changed what happened. We had another meeting after we had two members step up and say that they would like to try to keep it open. It had nothing to do with anything the Commissioners said or did. And I'd also like to assure you that Chief McCray had nothing to do with the Sugar Hill VFD being shut down. He was simply informed because it would affect Mount Pleasant Fire Department and dispatching. He, in fact, tried to talk us out of it. He wasn't very happy with us. We explained to him the challenges we faced, and he understood that, but he was still not very happy with us. But he did understand. You have no more authority over a Sugar Hill VFD or any other VFD than you do any other 501(c)(3) in Titus County. You can fund or unfund a department. That's all the authority you have over it. So I'm not sure what you thought was done to stop it.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Jerry Clark?
Good morning. Here to talk about the Titus County Veterans Service Officer. We don't have one. One of the most important positions in the state of Texas for the U.S. veterans is the county service officer. They advise the veterans on past service-related issues. They help the veterans understand the procedures for filing claims. They keep the veterans aware of any changes in the programs available to them and guide them through the endless red tape of our government. We have not had a full-time Veterans County Service Officer in Titus County for some time. In fact, if you call the Titus Veterans Office number, you get a recording from Judge Lee stating that you need to call Melissa Laurent in Camp County. Problem is, when you call her, she'll advise you that she is no longer under an MOU to help us. And she gives us the number to the Tyler office some 66 miles away. If you do a Google search about the Titus County veterans, a post from Miller County, Arkansas, service officer dated June 13, 2023 pops up stating, and I quote, "Titus County VSO position in Mount Pleasant, Texas is now vacant. Melissa Laurent, VCSO Camp County, has been covering Titus County and will continue to do so until June 17, 2023, as per memorandum of understanding with Camp County." After this date, there will no longer be a representation in Titus County. Titus County Veterans Service Officer is appointed by the Commissioners' Court. He or she must be certified and guides the veterans in the right... to guide the veterans in the right decision... direction. When the Titus County veterans have a local office to see to their needs. With Agent Orange claims finally being reviewed and Camp Lejeune claims having a deadline to file, we need help now. There is a state website for Texas that lists counties in need of service officers, but no mention of Titus County. The veterans of Titus County need help. Do you have any intention of filling the position? And if so, what is the delay? And when will we have someone we can count on to see to our needs?
Mr. Clark, to answer those questions, we did receive notice last two weeks, six hours ago, that she would no longer be doing those services there in Pittsburgh. So we do have money that we have been paying her to do that. We do still have some money allotted for that. I have spoken to the gentleman over at New Boston, and they're working out some deals. And I'm speaking with Judge Howell over there and Bobby, and we're trying to work something out. The problem with having a local one here is you have to have those records secure, especially on the Orange, Agent Orange and all. And we are working towards that. We do have some people that are going to New Boston for those cares right now. And we do have a... We're working on putting something together for our veterans. Our veterans will not be left alone.
Well, when Mr. Austin was here downstairs, it was a great asset to us. A lot of folks that I know don't have the transportation to go to the New Boston and Tyler.
We've got gentlemen that are driving people over there. We've got all types of help for those. So we haven't forgotten, and we are working on that and do have plans in the process.
Appreciate it. We need your help.
Yes, sir. We'll be there. This is Jesse Parchman. Good morning.
My name is Jesse Parchman, and today I'll be talking about civilian emergency response awareness. This 4th of July is one that my closest family and friends will never forget. As we shut down our party around 11:00 p.m., car by car, we left a few minutes after each other. However, the next 42 minutes were filled with chaos and prayers for a Titus County citizen due to a scene that turned out to be a fatal wreck. I do not stand here to criticize our first responders, but to encourage training for citizens in emergency response situations. Critical minutes were lost waiting for our first responders to get to the scene, and this is seen through multiple scenarios, whether it be a wreck, fire, or violent acts. Unfortunately, due to lack of awareness for these situations, good Samaritans who claim to have EMS training or on the phone with EMS can do more harm than good. It would be amazing if every citizen had access to the American Red Cross certifications in public safety and healthcare. But realistically, this may seem as a waste of time and money to most people. Our son may never use this in their lifetime. A couple of my friends thought that way before we responded to this accident. Additionally, others may feel the course would be too hard or not wanting the feeling of going back to school. But these attitudes will change in response to witnessing these scenarios. Citizens' training would need to be simple, basic training that is similar to old PSAs, which would cover things such as moving an injured or unconscious person, first aid kits, how to stop bleeding, if and when to use a tourniquet, how to care for wounds, whether it's from impalement or surface level, basic car knowledge such as the difference between dusty air from an airbag being deployed or being smoke-filled, the difference between grease and electrical fires, knowing what makes a house vulnerable to a fire, especially appliances such as space heaters, grills, and combustible items, how to properly store materials to avoid spontaneous combustion, and the proper use of a garden hose in case of a structural fire. We can all agree that these things should be common knowledge, and they're easily accessible through YouTube, but people will not look up these things until it's too late. Unfortunately, for the people that are in state panic, they can forget stuff as simple as stop, drop, and roll. I believe awareness generated by our county and city officials will keep the attention and interest of the public if you reduce structure, training programs, or awareness through social and printed platforms. Having training programs that create incentives for attendance can not only save someone's life, but give back to the community. After the events on the 4th of July, I felt it was my duty to make sure that the attention is brought up for the needs of citizens to have the proper knowledge in emergency situations. There is no negative in having every Titus County citizen educated with basic training on how to properly help their neighbor. I would appreciate y'all looking into this for the safety of Titus County citizens. Thank you.
Certainly. I certainly want to appreciate you coming and speaking on that. On behalf of the fire department, I was out there at the scene. The fire department did an outstanding job. Nothing could have been done. Time's going to be a problem wherever we are, but the fire department had the highway blocked way out there. Their men stepped up and helped. And yes, it was a tragic accident, and whether they was there probably when it happened, I don't know if there was anything that anybody could have done under the circumstances. But I do want to give the fire department kudos and the emergency response that were out there. They did an outstanding job out on 1402. But we will try to look into that and maybe see if we can get the Red Cross to come do some volunteer CPR training and stuff, like it is with the Volunteer Fire Department. It's hard to get volunteers. Unfortunately, in the society that we live in today, people are scared to help because they're going to get sued. And so... But we will certainly try to do some investigating on that and see if we can help in any way.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Any others? This is only three that I had listed here. Okay. Okay. So we'll move on to Agenda item number two, considering possibly approve the minutes from the June 20, 2023, emergency meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make the motion we approve those minutes.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve those minutes?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number three, considering possibly approve the minutes from the June 26, 2023, special meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make the motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve those minutes?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number four, presentation by Chief Larry McCray to address misinformation given by members of the Commissioners' Court concerning fire protection and emergency management.
Judge, during today's set of record straight, provided information in lieu of false misleading information given of a sudden to this court. During the meeting of June 26, Judge Cooper, you said the court is not debating my qualification. Now, I've done a good job of the county. You said communication with you and the Commissioners, as well as not having sometimes you need to keep your office informed is the problem. As you admitted to win the meetings during the meeting, when he asked you, you had talked to him about this, you said you did not. So I'm confused because you said you're not doubting my qualifications and I was doing a good job, but you never contacted me to let me know I was not meeting your expectations. Standard managerial procedures for a situation such as this, these were supervised from me personally, it was not meeting expectations. And let me know they were, they need to improve. However, you just decided to replace me. Somehow, that just doesn't make sense to me, but you did say you do things differently. Judge Cooper, you know, you said you only met with me once in the last six months. That's not true. We've met twice. First items on January 17 include the name of the Carroll of the Texas Department, First Management District Coordinator, made you sign a state form appointing me as your First Management Coordinator for the county. Second items, on around January 26, where you told me you were getting pressure from the Commissioners to replace me as the EMC. I said the pressure would be from Commissioner Applewhite, probably the market. You did not deny that. The reason I said that was because during the Commissioners' Court meeting on November 2nd, 2022, Commissioner Applewhite said the county needed to have its own EMC, because it was a conflict of interest for me to beat the EMC. Judge Lee did not agree with that suggestion at all. I also reminded you that Texas law, the judge of the county, judge of the county, that's the sole authority and responsibility to appoint the EMC. Since you understood that, but you also stated that you were going to need the District folks in the future for something you want. You also asked me if I could bring this up to take place, which I did not. Judge Cooper, you read off a list of items that you had not... that you said I had not provided to you often. During Judge Lee's tenure, he never requested the items. He never told me about anything you wanted. I received a text from you after the meeting on the 26th at 12:59 regarding requesting a copy of the emergency operations plan and the hazard mitigation plan, and you said you would make a list of things you would send me to keep your office informed. Your plans you listed that were listed above are in your office before we get out of your next one. I never got the list without the instructions you sent me that you need to keep your office Judge Cooper, you said having me as the city's county EMC is a conflict of interest because if there's an incident that occurs in the city and in county, I'm going to take care of the city because they pay me $3 million to take care of the county, the city, and not the county. Well, I only paid $3 million, and you're wrong in your assumption. We have conducted annual exercises since 2004, following county-wide incidents such as tornadoes, mashdowns, hazards, and fire incidents that included all emergency responders in the county and the city. These exercises also include five FSR exercises in the city and county. Just as a side note, we did not hire a contractor to come in and prepare and execute these exercises. I, along with the help of many others, developed and executed exercises. Contractors would have charged us an estimated $10,000 to $15,000 for each exercise. The recent incident with the county power outage shows your assumption that I would only take care of the city was wrong. I helped Winfield and Miller's Co. get generated order to run their wastewater treatment plants, set up an ice distribution center for city and county residents, established cooling centers for the city and county residents at the Mount Pleasant Civic Center, set up sleeping area for construction workers at the Junior High, Mount Pleasant Junior High. I sent forms to capture work time and a reminder to capture all costs related to the incident of all city and county departments and the VFD. I wrote the county disaster declaration for you to sign and sent you a reminder of the need to have the Commissioners' Board meetings extended before its 7-day expiration date. I set up a phone line and staffed for city and county residents, their elderly, or had special needs to call if they needed assistance. I sent a text to the county Commissioners requesting any damages that need to be reported with the state. I sent a text to the City Council of Commissioners' Court daily with updates on the situation in the city and county. Judge Cooper, without having your facts straight, you sent me a text on Friday, July 1, saying I was willing to take the compensation from the county while not fulfilling my contract because the hazard mitigation plan was out of date and was leaving you, the Commissioners, and the safety of the responders and the community vulnerable. I sent back a text and you telling me to get to the COG and get the correct information on the situation with the hazard mitigation plan, where you learned it was not a responsibility of the First Management Coordinator to keep the plan up to date. The data in the counties and our COG either hire the COG to update the plan or hire a contractor to do it. You also learned that the COG had been in contact with the previous administration about getting the COG to update the plan, but for whatever reason or reason, it was not followed through. Commissioner Parchman, you said you feel like I'm anti-volunteer for the fire department, and I do not support the volunteer department. And I'm the reason Winfield closed and why Sugar Hill almost went away. Well, here's a list of things that our department has done or is doing to help the VFDs and the county. We provide monthly county-wide training for all the volunteer fire departments up until the time, only a very small number of them started attending. We set up a provider way through training online for, at the convenience of all the county volunteer firefighters. We log and track their training records and can provide a report anytime they want on what training each volunteer has or needs. Provide instructors to go to their meetings to conduct training, provide instructors, water, training props, fuel, and equipment if the VFDs want to come out to our station to train and field for training. We allow the VFDs to participate in our active 911 and receive alerts on their phones for calls. We allow the VFDs to participate in Mount Pleasant Fire Department email system or receive emails on their phones for calls. They are using our radio system for communications. We provide dispatching for all the VFDs. We fill the breathing apparatus cylinders when needed. We provide our SOPs to the VFDs to use as a template for making their own. We provide radios to them through Homeland Security grants, allow volunteer firefighters to use our gear washer to clean their gear. We provide food and water for your incidents. As a certified field examiner with the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, I helped Cody DeWitt, a volunteer with the Trial Ex Volunteer Fire Department, get recertified after he let his certification label hit no charge. Have always sent more resources to help with the fires in the county than our contract has ever required. We provide a fire behavior report every day to the VFD showing how severe the grass fires could be for the day. For years, we had month the fire GCM meeting at our station, provided meal or information and our concerns to be discussed and resolved until Commissioner Applewhite decided those meetings should no longer be held at our station. So Commissioner Parker, does this sound like we're anti-volunteer?
Look, I'm not going to hear this out right here from everybody.
Is this a simple question? No, sir, no.
I'll go one-on-one with you in office to talk this out, but I'm not going to hear this out. I've said what I've said, and I feel the way I feel, so I'm sorry.
Jerry, what, you're a volunteer firefighter? Do you believe we're anti-volunteer fire department? I said you're a volunteer firefighter. Do you believe we are anti-volunteer fire department?
This is not for Jerry. That's not a question for Jerry. That's one for the Commissioners here. If you've got a question for the Commissioners, we'll answer those, but it's not going to be a roundhouse audience.
So can you tell me how it was involved, making Winfield go away?
I'd say that I'm not going to hear this out in public right here if you want to say that.
But you're able to say that in public about me? Saying that I'm... You're willing to say that I'm anti-volunteer in public, but you won't give your reason why? I'm not going to argue with you either. Judge Cooper, during the Commissioners' Court on May 8, you said the contract between the city and county expires every two years. The contract's actually for 10 years, the price the county pays changes every two years, but the contract doesn't expire. Judge, you said the county owns an air trailer and a brush truck. The county does not own the air trailer, even though Commissioner Applewhite believes the trailer belongs to Sugar Hill. Mount Pleasant owns the trailer and has the title to it, which shows the city of Mount Pleasant is the owner. You go back to the video of April 25, 2022, Commissioners' meeting, Chief Jerry Clark explains how NPFD ended up with the trailer. I also have a copy of the April 6, 2021 Sugar Hill VFD meeting minutes where the motion was made by Marcus Karloff and seconded by Sidney Derrick to transfer the title to the Mount Pleasant Fire Department and was approved unanimously. The county owns the cab and chassis of the brush truck, but the city owns the firefighting units, radios, and all that. On October 27, 2021, Sugar Hill's volunteer firefighter Wesley Van De Beer died while attempting to operate the fire engine at a structural fire in the county. Efforts were made by many on scene, including Mount Pleasant Fire Department personnel, to save his life. However, during the Commissioners' Court meeting on April 25, 2022, I listened to Wesley Van De Beer's son and daughter blame me for their father's death because they were told I had told our people not to help Sugar Hill or Mr. Van De Beer. I was not even on the call. After they both spoke, Mr. Van De Beer's son said he was told the information by the county commissioner that was on the call. The only county commissioner that was on the call was Commissioner Applewhite. As shown above, many false statements and misleading statements have been made about me by some members of this court, some of which, in my opinion, were made solely to try and justify getting a county EMC to appease some members of this court. The false statements, I believe, also meet the definition of slander, the action of making a false spoken statement damaging to a person's reputation. If these false statements continue to be made, I am more than ready to see if the court agrees with me on this. That's all I have to say.
I guess they didn't want to hear our comments on that subject. Chief is right. I did meet with him twice, not just once. Once it was with Nathan Carroll. The forms that he's talking about into my office were there the next morning after I asked for them. They are outdated. They went out in 2018. I came in in January of 2023, so I've only been here six months, like he did state. But there's some things that are expired and some different things going on with that. And the AGCO is... was voted on by Jimmy Parker and the Council before... Commissioners before us and agreed to pay AGCO $10,000 to do that report, which has still not been done yet. I am the emergency manager of this and am held responsible for those things, with Chief being the coordinator. I felt he should have come to me with that information, letting me know when I got into office that that information was lapsed or outdated, however you'd like to state that, and then we could have went forward with that. His statement about me and wanting other votes from my Commissioners, I'm not asking for other votes from my Commissioners. What I stated was that I'm trying to run this court a little differently. I'm trying to run it like a business instead of a government entity. I do have to have three votes to get anything passed in the Commissioners' Court, but I'm going to stand beside my Commissioners. Commissioner Parker was not for that, but we had three others. At the end of the day, it was my decision. There was also some false accusations made about me and some of the school board members being upset with me. Me letting Chief McCray go as our emergency coordinator, what that did was, that changed nothing for MPISD. He will still be their emergency coordinator because they are in the city, and we will move forward and have our own emergency coordinator. And I feel like that two people are better than one. I'm not saying age, there's sickness, there's health, there's all kinds of things that could happen with one emergency manager. I think if we have two emergency managers, we could work closely together. Maybe not going to happen that way at this time. But... And I also didn't say that the city paid Larry McCray $3 million. That is not his salary. That is the city's part of the budget. Their part of the budget's a little over $3 million, and ours is a little over one... right at $1.3 million. So there is what I said, that the city pays them a bigger part of his deal there. This is not about fire protection. This is about us, Titus County citizens, having an emergency coordinator. All the times that Chief McCray has spoke, I've never heard him have two press conferences. It's always been one press conference, and that would be including the city of Mount Pleasant is this, this, and this. In my opinion, in which it is my decision to hire or fire the emergency coordinator, in my opinion, we should have two press conferences, one for the city of Mount Pleasant and one for Titus County. And when I stated that you can't be at two spots at one time, I still believe that. I do have a funeral home, and there's a big, important funeral this morning going on, but I'm here representing the people of Titus County, and my partner's taking care of that, Stuart Sloan. So therefore, two people is a whole lot better than one, because one person can't always be there. And that's part of the reason that I wanted to move forward with a different emergency coordinator. I also have the support of my Commissioners, three of my Commissioners. Me and Jimmy don't agree on that, and that is fine as well. But Chief McCray does not communicate with them, and that's not an accusation. That is the truth. And until we brought this up, one of my Commissioners didn't even get emergency reports on their phones about things going on until just the last... on their phones about things going on until just the last couple of months. He won't speak to Commissioner Applewhite and so we're going to let things go, bygones be bygones. We're moving forward as Titus County and we will have your new emergency manager in place in the next 30 days. I have given Chief McRae his certified letter stating that. I sent a copy of that to Ed Thatcher and I also sent it to our mayor, Mr. Tracy Craig. And in the last Commissioners' Court, when Wendell asked me if, if, if I had asked for that or if I'd sent him a letter and I said no, I'd be sending it to Ed, there was some miscommunication between me and the city manager. City manager told me I just need to give him 30 days, so I was unaware that I need to give it to the chief. I did do that and have responded to all of those. So with that being said, we will be moving forward. We will have a, we will have a different coordinator. I see some of the high school people here today. I spoke with school board members. I spoke with the superintendent and Wendell Lakin said that the school board was mad at me. I haven't changed anything for MPISD. So if there was a school board that, that would have had a beef with us, it would have been Chapel Hill or Hartz Bluff because that would be the ones that would be out of the, out of the city limits, so. Any of the Commissioners have anything they'd like to say?
Just like you were saying a while ago, I've been in office almost three years and him being the emergency management coordinator, I have not gotten a single email that I can remember or a text message, a phone call of any kind of emergency response. Any storm that's gone through, not, not anything to notify me, so I just want to clarify that.
And also the last storm we had hit Argo, Talco out that way first and I got a response from Chief McRae after it hit the city. So not here to throw anybody on the bus, he's done us a good job. I'd like to move forward with this and as I ran on, we're better together. If they want to work with us, our fire, uh, emergency coordinator will be 100% willing to work with them. That'll be their choice whether they choose to work along with us.
I just want to interrate that I did, we was doing the fire meetings, I did shake his hand and say, you know, it's just bygones be bygones and I thought this was over and, you know, I was man enough to shake his hand, say, let's get it going, but he just continues to run us down.
Well, it's here and there. We've moved forward. Jimmy, you have anything you'd like to comment on it?
No, not really.
Okay.
It, I, I still, I still think it's, it, it's not a good deal for, for the county. First off, I don't know what kind of salary we're going to be looking at for.
The same, the same salary that we are now, it won't be out any extra money.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. We'll move on to action number five, considering possibly take action on a resolution of intent to establish the Titus County PACE program. Do you need to say anything on that for us or?
Judge, Commissioners thanks Doug Taylor, the Texas Pace Authority, that's here two weeks ago and provided an overview of how this program worked. The two critical steps are, this first one, to adopt a resolution of intent that has a public hearing date in it, which I believe is set for two weeks from today, if that's accurate. That provides an opportunity for the, for the public to provide me comments if they wish. And then after that, you can consider a resolution to establish the program, which we then set it up. Judge, you had a question at the last meeting about, once the program is established, could the county unwind it or cancel it? The answer is yes. Through the same process, you could establish or pass a resolution to, to cancel it, so it's not a locked in permanent thing. So that's, that's something too. Also, since the last meeting, Ms. Stevens had some questions about what the tax assessor collector's role might be in collecting any delinquent payments. I provided information to her on that, sort of clarified that role, so we continue to work with her and will support her in any way.
Miss, not to interrupt you, Mr. Steve, is there any computer stuff or anything, are we going to have to change anything of that out as far as your computers to, we're good with that then?
The only thing out of pocket is that you will have a limited agreement with the law firm.
To collect.
Or that was permission about our current, the past term.
Okay.
I'm not sure about that one. If it was a voluntary contract.
Okay. Okay. We got any? Thank you. We get a motion on this resolution or?
I make a motion on the resolution. Resolution to pass.
For the PACE. I've got a, a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to, for the resolution of the Titus County PACE program.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number six, considering possibly approve extending the following bids for one year, currently under a one-year contract with the opportunity to extend the bid for two additional years if approved by Commissioners' Court and then approved by the vendor. On this, we have lawn maintenance with sun crane and hoist, culverts with national wholesale supply, rolled oils and rolled materials with HE Span, Seaton Construction, WM CCP Solutions, RK Hall, Sawyer, Oklahoma, RK Hall of Mount Pleasant and Richard Drake Fuel Diesel and Gas by Jackson Oil.
Is all of these prices from these companies going to remain the same as they were last year?
If they agree with that contract, my understanding is yes.
The way it works is I'm supposed to come to you and say, ask you, are you pleased with these companies? And if so, then we contact them and say, Commissioners' Court would like to extend this for one year with no change in the cost.
Okay.
If they want to change in the cost, we'll have to come back.
Back to.
Okay, that's what I.
We can extend it two years, but I prefer to do it one year at a time if you then one of these companies does meet your expectations. We can get out within 30 days at any time, but to do all that at one time, so one year term, ask you this.
Well, I make a motion to, to add all, all of these back on another one-year contract because they're services we've got to help.
Is, is, is P2 involved? Will they, are they in this too?
I don't think they had anything on our, on our original bid because they are a spoken part of.
Okay.
They, they're special.
Yes, yes, okay. That's what I was thinking, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I think the, the covert people in Gilmore, I just, they, I went there the other day and they had one covert on the yard. I don't know if they went out.
They went out. They're shutting down.
Okay. But, but this is different than them, right? This is national wholesale, I'm assuming is different.
It's out here in over Dr. Pepper.
Okay. Okay. We got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to extend those bids for one year.
Second.
Got a second, got two seconds. Got one by Mr. Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number seven, considering possibly approve the purchase of a laptop computer and cell phone for the new emergency management coordinator. Reason I've put this on there, some of them that I've interviewed have asked about having a computer. I really think it'd be beneficial to us for them to have a computer. That way we'll have documents and stuff like these that are out of date, so if we do move forward or they, they decide to step aside, then we've got it all on that computer and we're not chasing rabbits to look for, for our plans. And that way we can kind of keep those updated. The emergency, the new emergency management coordinator can email me those. If we've got any problems, anything being out of date or anything to that nature, we can stay on top of it. And like I said, with AGCOG, they, we did vote, or the Commissioners' Court voted several years back to extend that for them to do the mitigation program. I don't know that, I guess they weren't not paid, Barbara, if we can look into that, the $10,000. And they said it'll take about 18 months to get that back up to date and we'll move forward with that. But the reason that I put this computer on there and a cell phone is so that we can stay in contact with our new emergency management coordinator and have open lines.
Well, I have a, I have a brand new laptop that I haven't used very much at all and it, and it's, I can do everything on my phone that I need, so the laptop, I've got, I've got a brand new one for that and it was bought six months ago, so that's.
Can, can we move that from Commissioner Mitchell's over to the new emergency coordinators?
Something I don't use. I, I thought I was going to use it, but my phone does everything I need.
Well, that'll save the county about $1,500 there, so.
Do you definitely need a printer? I know I'll start using a laptop, but I'm very free. You're all.
They can send it here or, and if we get into that, then we'll certainly address that issue at, at that time. Let's, let's don't buy one until we, let's get, let's get down the road and see if we do need that and if, I'll go over that with the new emergency manager, but if we do get into that, we may get one later on, so. So I got a.
On the phone, $70.
Yes, ma'am. So I guess it's a little different than what is written up here. It's not considered, we're not going to purchase a laptop, so that's going to change just a little bit with Commissioner Mitchell's motion that he give his laptop to the emergency coordinator and the motion with the cell phone of $70 to the major, emergency management coordinator. So I've got a motion, I just need a second.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed?
No.
Number eight, approve oral and written reports from the county officials.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve those written reports.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Number nine, considering possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve that.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 10, approve the budget amendments, Ms. Barbara.
Judge, you have three budget amendments, number 30, 31 and 32. Number 30 is simply in response to items that were approved. The sixth meeting is the $30,000 for the professional service fire contract, VFD International. That meeting is being paid for ARCA funds and it's coming out of the other capital outlay that was done to get set aside for, from ARCA. And then the second item on there is the $1,000 from general county contingency for awards of recognition, up to $1,000 annually as approved by the county judge. As I said, those are both approved from the 26th. The next one is related to the sheriff commissary. Sheriff, he will contact me and ask me if we'll give details to the commissary to make sure everything was run efficiently and is running efficiently, but there's one item that can be changed and he's been paying a half-time person to assist in the commissary and he has also has an acting assistant who does an excellent job, by the way, her name is Sam Litterstone. And we can also pay her from the commissary to meet some requirements, so this budget that follows along is to move her salary from jail to the commissary. So there's the, her salary, the duties that go along with that and the sheriff's aware, aware and it just leaves her salary from general county to the commissary. And the last one, these are just changes in line items, a bunch of precincts, one, an increase in repairs of $3,000 and a decrease to bridges of $3,000. And the district judges, an increase to computer expense and a decrease to office supplies that's to purchase a new computer for the board member. Any questions?
I believe she covered it pretty good.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those budget amendments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Number 11, sign the pay orders, approve the payments.
Make a motion for a fair bill.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Closing comments. Jeff, do you have anything?
No, we're done now.
Okay. Do you?
I did leave somebody out at last court meeting that we helped us clean up our roads to get, to get, when we get through there and that's the Clearview, uh, they, construction people, that's Donald and Donald Parr, Drew, Drew Parr, Weston Parr. They helped us get the road deal and I left them out last, I just wanted.
We certainly appreciate their help. They got a lot of good equipment too. Hold on, Ms. Holly.
Can you say more?
Certainly, sorry. It just states your name and address, Ms. Parker.
My name is Holly Parker. Um, a quick backup for you guys is that, so I pulled four years of data from the fire departments, Mount Pleasant and all the volunteers, right? So what I'm going to read to you is just a short quote from, it's, incident 11 from Cook Bill's, so when they write their, their reports up, they gave me paper data, I had to transcribe everything and then look at everything that's going on. So this is a note section, right, when they responded to incident 11. And it says, it seems that county commissioners want Cook Bill to respond, but MP doesn't want us to respond or be part of our own scene. Okay. I also interviewed, I sat down with five of the volunteer fire departments. I wasn't able to sit down with Tri-Lakes or Five Star and some were very, um, let me just say this, some were very supportive of Chief McRae, huge advocates of him, others, there, there's issues, right? And so just making this comment in regard to the conversation that he had with Mr. Parchman is that there are legitimate issues between the city, the leadership and the volunteers, right? That is not a figment of the imagination of the county commissioners. It's a very serious concern that I have after interviewing everybody and looking at the data. So I just wanted to make that clear that this is also coming from the volunteer firefighters as well.
Thank you, and we do appreciate all your research on that, Ms. Parker as well. We don't have any other business, so.
Judge.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir, Mr.
I'd like to make justice on this.
Yes, sir.
And that's a good point, they do have a good business.
Okay.
Jimmy, you need to leave. You need to leave.
James, you are from Mount Pleasant. Judge, the fellow that spoke there a while ago corrected a statement that there's been no Titus County VSO since Steve, but that, that was correct statement and I believe Pittsburgh told us, told y'all that they were no longer going to take veterans here.
Two weeks ago.
You correctly stated that you are in talks with another entity too. It's, you've been active, very active in trying to help the veterans here.
Thank you.
You're very good at it.
Appreciate it.
But there's a statement made that concerned me and I'd like to clarify it the best and know how. It was a comment made about the Commissioners' Court doing hiring of veteran service officers. I don't think that's totally correct. I think the hiring of veteran service officer authorized with the county judge. Is that a correct statement?
I think you're, you're correct on that and, and just like us reverting back to, I hate to keep going back to the, the fire, the fire situation EMC. Yes, it is my call, but all four of these gentlemen here will have a part in that. I'm not running this on.
They got a vote on it.
Well, not necessarily a vote, but I will have their opinion on it before I move forward on anything of that nature. And the reason being, it, it has nothing to do with my agenda for later on. It's me trying to do the best for Titus County and I think these four gentlemen have got good minds about them, good business sense, and I'm going to take their advice on, on all my stuff. I'm not just going to make a, jump out and make a decision by myself on some things.
It does allow the county judge.
Yes, sir.
Okay, a lot, a lot of people don't know that the veteran coming out of military service can be rated by his branch of service. By rating, I mean any disability or anything like that. And the man states a while ago, you know, a lot of people have trouble getting to other places. Well, there's local, we have local groups like VFW, which is no longer here, but in the surrounding areas are local. You've got the DAB, you've got the American Legion that has service officers in. They can go there if they, if they need to, if they, if they get help there. But a lot of the younger veterans, they do their own thing on, on computers.
Right.
They're really savvy on computers, but that's one that, judge base with the court, there's a lot of help out there and some of you know there is help out there for, and there are people willing to help.
Absolutely.
There's, there's.
And a lot want to do it and not be recognized too, and we understand that as well. We'll leave that at that.
Anyway, that's what I wanted to say in defense. There's nobody right or wrong in this situation. All over everywhere, they're doing away with these things. All over everywhere, they're doing away with these things. County funding or whatever other reason they're doing away with it, they're doing away with it.
Right.
People don't understand. This being a veteran service officer, not an easy job.
Absolutely.
You have to be really knowledgeable. You did make, I think, a great statement a while ago about information, you know, we lived out. There is responsibilities.
Yes, sir.
Can be sued.
Absolutely. And that's until we can get something in place to secure those records a little differently, I won't move forward. I can't speak for the other Commissioners, but I will not turn my back on the veterans, but I'm not going to have the county liable for those records without proper security.
I just wanted to see if you answered this court and the judge. He is honestly personally trying to get something done for the veterans. That's a true and honest statement.
I appreciate that, Mr. Clark. Jimmy, closing remark.
The only thing I was going to say is I want to send my condolences out to the Preford family and the loss of Shane.
Absolutely. We've had a tragedy, and also one of our leaders has lost his wife, and they'll be having that service here shortly. So if I don't have any other comments, I'll turn- have a motion adjourned so that those who want to go to that funeral can certainly make it. Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed?